Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Commission Meeting for the City of Muskegon this August 26th of 2014. Before we begin, I'd like to invite Mr. George Monroe, Evanston Avenue Baptist Church, up to lead us in prayer, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Monroe?
Shall we pray? Hail to Heavenly Father, again we thank you for the privilege, Lord, that we meet here in this way, and we have the freedom to meet in this way, Lord. We thank you for our mayor and our manager, our commissioners and clerk, Lord, that you undertake for them at all times, Lord. I'll be with this meeting and give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. May we have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request: To approve minutes of the August 11th Commission Work Session Meeting and the August 12th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Amendment to the City Code of Ordinances Livestock and Poultry Planning Economic Development, summary request: Staff is requesting to amend the livestock and poultry ordinance to allow for an education exception, which would allow accredited educational institutions to keep a limited number of livestock, poultry, fowl, rabbits, and other animals for educational purposes. These institutions would first need to receive planning commission approval after a public hearing. Staff recommendation: Approval of the ordinance amendment. Sale of buildable lot at 360 East Isabella, Planning Economic Development, summary request: To approve the sale of a vacant buildable lot at 360 East Isabella to May Property Management LLC, a Michigan limited liability company who owns the adjacent parcel at 1089 Sophia, Muskegon, Michigan. The lot is 66 by 132 and is being offered to May Property Management LLC for $900 plus the fee to register the deed. May Property Management LLC will be combining this property with his existing property, which would be considered unbuildable should his home be destroyed over 75 percent. His property is 33 by 132 feet. The true cash value for the property listed in the assessor's office is $2,500, and our price is set at $1,875, which is 75 percent of that amount. The city has owned the property since 2004, and there have been no inquiries for potential construction. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and to authorize both the mayor and clerk to sign said resolution and deed. Contract for analysis of impediment study, Community and Neighborhood Services, summary of request: The cities of Muskegon, Muskegon Heights, Norton Shores, and the County of Muskegon are entering into an agreement with Intellectual Business Solutions to conduct an analysis of impediment study in the County of Muskegon to further fair housing initiatives. Staff recommendation: To approve the contract and authorize the mayor to sign. Approval of Architectural Services Procurement Proposals for CNS, Community and Neighborhood Services, summary request: To approve Andrea Regler as the Architectural Services Provider for Community and Neighborhood Services. The bidding process resulted in four proposals. Staff recommendation: To approve Andrea Regler as the Architectural Services Provider for the Community and Neighborhood Services Office for two years. 2014 Great Lakes Shoreline Cities Green Infrastructure Grant, Planning Economic Development, summary request: The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has released applications for a green infrastructure grant to be used for projects that improve the Great Lakes water quality by reducing treating stormwater runoff via green infrastructure. The West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission has offered to prepare the grant application in conjunction with Nutterville Incorporated and Golden and Associates. Windsor Dick will also manage the project if the grant funding is approved with city participation and oversight. The project must be for public property; therefore, the city must officially apply for the grant. The proposed project will be based on the SAW grant proposal previously approved with implementation through the new grant for stormwater management green infrastructure. The project will include stormwater management green infrastructure on the properties surrounding the Biedler Road and End area, city and county parcels. It may also include a rain garden at Hartshorn near the far backside of Friconos parking lot. This area would be visible from the Lake Shore Trail, Hartshorn, and Friconos. There is currently a low spot where wetland vegetation attempts to grow, and this will be enhanced as it will function for stormwater filtration and will be more attractive. Staff recommendation: To approve the city's application for the U.S. EPA Green Infrastructure Grant, which includes committing to preserve, maintain the green infrastructure for 15 years, and erect appropriate signage, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary documents for the grant submittal, as well as any documents required to accept the grant if we receive approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion?
Items B and D.
That's C?
B is in Boyd, D is in David.
Any others? Matt? Do I have a motion, please?
Motion. A move that we approve and consider, consent agenda is read minus items, is that B and D?
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to accept the consent agenda as presented minus items D, or B and D. We'll go alphabetically. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we approve the amendment to the City Code of Ordinances regarding livestock and poultry.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner German, to amend the City Code of Ordinances Livestock and Poultry. Commissioner?
As I was reading that, they're going to be in educational institutions. Does that mean they're going to be at school locations?
Correct, correct. And Mike can actually probably answer some more questions for you if you'd like about it.
Yes, the Career Tech Center on Harvey Street actually has plans to do in addition, to add this to their curriculum. So we figured that we may want to allow this to any other educational services as well. And it would be contingent upon planning commission approval as a special use permit.
Wherever it goes, it has to be approved by the planning commission?
Yes, and whatever that location would be, there would be a public hearing notice, and notices would be sent out to property owners and tenants within 300 feet of the property.
And what is the, is there any kind of number of restriction, how many animals there might be?
It doesn't get into it specifically how many. It's at the planning commission's discretion, but it does say a limited amount.
And you feel that 25 feet is sufficient to, in location from a residence?
Yeah, I think we believe so, and taking into account that most of the educational places that would do it have significant room to either extend those setbacks even further, or they've already been kind of isolated away from residential properties.
Thank you. Any other? Vice Mayor?
Just so as we're absolutely clear on this, as I read this, I understand you're only allowed to use this exemption if you're a currently recognized educational institution, and it has to be on that institution's property?
Correct. It would have to be accredited institution. It couldn't just be somebody homeschooling and saying they're using it as educational purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist, item D?
I would move that we approve the contract for analysis of impediment study by the Community and Neighborhood Services.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Rizmasipiga to contract for analysis of impediment study. Commissioner?
Again, I have two questions. I would like to, we're paying the biggest chunk of that. How does that number arrive at? I think it was 40 percent goes down from there.
40 percent, 15, 20. Hi. Well, because we are the bigger entitlement community, it's required of entitlement communities like Norton Shores, Muskegon Heights, and Muskegon to provide this study to the public and for the purpose of setting forth our annual plans. We did this back in 2009, and we took a bigger chunk of the cost. At that time, it was $29,000, and we paid more than $15,000. And so it's based on the aggregate, which is how many citizens we have versus the citizens of Norton Shores and Muskegon Heights, and based on how much entitlement money you receive. And so for that purpose, Norton Shores may be a little bit larger in citizenry, but it doesn't receive as much entitlement money, and so it would just not be fair to them to pay the bulk of that. So we also are in agreement with the County of Muskegon, and we have a fair housing analysis that we do annually to further fair housing, and we contract that through the county with the West Michigan Fair Housing Agency of Grand Rapids. So we have set aside a certain amount, a percentage, and so this is in line with that same percentage for that agreement.
My second question is, how will this study benefit us? What will it tell us?
Okay.
Will it change your thinking, or are there some payoffs for them?
Well, payoffs. Wow, I wish I could tell you just how much the 2009 analysis, what that did for us. It allowed all of us to begin working together as a partner. Before that analysis of impediment study, each community was so separated, and we still had to do the same items required by HUD. But since that analysis in 2009, we have worked collectively to provide the same studies, agreements, to fulfill our obligation to HUD. We've done it as a group, and that has saved us money, and it looks good for our community to see that we're all working together versus separate in our own communities. So I think that's a big plus for the City of Muskegon. We don't have to share the brunt of that. The other item that I could mention that would be a benefit, it tells us what the market looks like in our communities. It separates out each of us, but then it collectively compares us to one another, which is a nice read if you'd like. It's on the Shoreline City website, so you're welcome to read our 2009 analysis of impediment study to see what we looked like then. And HUD requires that every few years we do the same thing, see how we've changed, see what things are different, what things are similar, work together. And then if there are some codes or policies that we've put in place that tend to, you know, separate people from housing opportunities, that we look at those things. And so it's required to, every few years, look at it, and I think it just gives us a way to plan going forward. And we are embarking on our next five-year plan, consolidated plan, and so this will come as a help for us to build that for 2016.
You've mentioned a couple times, this is a requirement by HUD.
It is a requirement, so.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anita. Public hearings, please.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, Ameriform Planning Economic Development, summary request: Pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended, Ameriform Acquisition LLC 1790 Sundolphin Drive has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The total capital investment will be $375,000 in real property and $4,625,000 in personal property, and will create 35 new jobs. This qualifies them for a tax abatement of 12 years on real property and nine years on personal property. Staff recommendation: Approval of the resolution granting industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for real property and nine years for personal property.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mike?
Good evening.
I'd just like to note that with the passing of Proposal One, this will affect the personal property portion of the abatement slightly. If approved, they would get the full benefit in 2015, and beyond that, any years, they would be getting a 50 percent reduction on their state. I have it written right here. It's the State Essential Services Assessment by 50 percent, which is a state tax that would not affect any of the city's finances. And the real property portion, which we generally approve for 12 years, would not be affected. And we have Tom Harris here from the company, and Dwana Thompson is also met with him.
Very good, very good. Vice Mayor?
I had one question for Mike. Since Proposal One did pass, and it does phase out the personal property tax, we do have a number of personal property tax abatements. The, and, you know, I guess it just didn't really occur to me until tonight, but is the reimbursement revenue we're going to get from the state based on the abated value or the actual value of that personal property? And, you know, I guess basically, is this going to impact our future revenue? Because normally, you do these things, and after a period of time, you're collecting tax on the full value of the personal property. So I'm just, if anybody has an answer to that, I don't know.
I think we did make a call to a couple state agencies to try to figure this one out, and the short answer is, the ones we've already approved will have an effect on our, right, on our reimbursement, but the ones that we approve going forward, they won't necessarily have an effect. But it will have a benefit for the business, just like it would have before.
Right, right.
That sounds...
Yeah, that sounds about right. It's kind of hard to get a straight answer out of anyone at the state. It seems kind of new to everybody.
Since when?
We had a lot of I-don't-knows, but we think we figured it out.
Very good. Anything else, Commissioners? Any members of the public like to speak to this issue? Matt will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and go forward. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for real property and nine years for personally property for Ameriform Acquisition LLC at 1790 Sundolphin Drive.
Support. It's been moved by the vice mayors, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for real property and nine years for personal property for Ameriform Acquisition LLC of 1790 Sundolphin Drive. Any further comments?
Let's just see a company grow.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Harris, and look forward to those 35 new jobs.
Thank you very much.
You betcha.
We really enjoyed a really great relationship, the Harris family, with the City of Muskegon over many, many years, so we want to thank you.
We appreciate the relation too, sir.
Thank you. Good luck.
New business, please.
Extend the moratorium for marijuana licensing, City Clerk, summary request: On June 24th, 2014, the City Commission extended the current moratorium 60 days due to pending legislation that recently passed in the House and Senate. Staff is asking to extend the moratorium by an additional 90 days. If the proposed bills are signed, it will create significant changes to our proposed ordinance. Staff recommendation: To extend the moratorium an additional 90 days.
I move to extend the moratorium an additional 90 days. Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Turnquist, to extend the moratorium for marijuana licensing for an additional 90 days. Any discussion? We'll take public comment, Andrew, sir. Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business commissioners that you'd like to bring? Vice Mayor?
Well, she stayed all the way through our meeting. I see our partner, Windsor Dick, is here, and I thought perhaps she might want to share some of the information regarding the grant we voted to partner with. That might be good information for everybody.
Did he put you on the spot, Kathy?
If you could just kind of give us a brief overview of what's involved.
I didn't see you sneak in. Well, we can just get your name, affiliation.
Kathy Evans, West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission. Yeah, we've partnered with the City of Muskegon on many projects over the years, and we had an opportunity this year for the first time to apply to the Great Lakes Cities Grant because they offered it to communities of under populations of 50,000. Last year, it was only for the cities over that number. So we kind of looked at it last year. It looked like a good fit. I know the city is active in managing stormwater and looking at ways to improve water quality through that. Green infrastructure is an important aspect of city plans and master plans and county and regional planning, so we thought, why don't we take a look at what we proposed to the DEQ last year through the Stormwater Asset and Watershed Management Grant, which is non-federal dollars, and use that as the match toward this federal program? Because it did require a 50/50, you know, one-to-one match. And rather than looking for cash or in-kind services to meet the match, we have a pending, you know, non-federal grant that it looks like we will probably receive, because that was one of those first-come, first-served kind of grants that went in last year, and the city and several other municipalities of Muskegon County received those grants, but there was only so much money last year. So this year, if, and the DEQ has the full budget of the amount that they intended to give out as grants, it's in the DEQ budget. So they said that the regional commissions' SAW grant proposal last year was in line for getting funded this year, as long as the DEQ made the grant awards available. And I think that has something to do with their bonding situation right now. So as long as they can make the money available, it is in the DEQ budget, and it should be available by next June. So it seemed like a really good fit, because that was all about stormwater and green infrastructure in the City of Muskegon. We have a lot of different partners working on us with that, including Consumers Energy, Great Lakes Dock and Materials for Plank Trucking, the Muskegon Lake Watershed Partnership, and of course, the West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission. So we had already applied for a grant with match and grant total of $110,448.60. So we thought, let's try to leverage some federal dollars and do more. So the summary that Ann gave earlier was good. We're looking at those areas at the end of Biedler, city and county properties, and possibly some at Hartshorn Marina, where we have an opportunity to do some rain gardens and stormwater management there. There could be other locations, but we'll just see how far the budget goes. So I'll be working with staff over the next week and with Golden and Associates to put together the proposal and get staff review and approval before it gets submitted by you.
Very good.
Any questions?
Commissioners, I just want to thank you for your diligence and your dedication, and it was an awfully nice celebration the other Friday, and I'm really looking forward to being deemed listed as an area of concern. And I hope that everybody takes an opportunity to see the fruits of your labor and our partners' labors and all this with the softening of the shoreline.
Yeah.
Which goes hand in hand with all that work of the actual removal of toxic sediments that's been going on through the decades. So thank you so much for enhancing the life of Muskegon.
Well, you're welcome, and thank you. And, you know, I look forward to the City of Muskegon becoming the next, you know, Great Lakes poster child for communities that are leading Great Lakes restoration. And I think, you know, Mayor Galrin, you're in a good standing here to maybe be that leader for us, so maybe we can talk some more about the Great Lakes Cities and St. Lawrence Seaway Initiative at another time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? Public comments? I have Mr. James Wilson, please. Oh, sorry, James Williams. Did you want to address the commission?
Yes, my own issue.
No, no, no. Your issue.
James Williams, 1482 Morgan Avenue. I'll pass these out because I want to see that. The last time I was before this board was to buy the property adjacent to the property I already own, I think it's 861 Marquette, to build more apartments. Once we finally got a purchase agreement, well, the planning department went up in the price, and we had to get that back down, and we finally got around to a purchase agreement. The purchase agreement they wrote is unsignable. I mean, if you'd like to read along in paragraph five, let me read it if you would allow me to, and you follow me. Where it starts, "The homes shall be substantially completed within 48 months, and in event with substantial completion has not occurred, or the restriction of the paragraph relating to tree removal is violated. In the sole judgment of the city, the property and all improvements then installed shall revert to, entitled to the city without any compensation or credit to the buyer and free of all lees. The covenant in this paragraph shall survive the closing and run with the land." So now, when I go to a bank to borrow, probably, I'm figuring $750,000, this is going to come up on a purchase agreement, I mean, on the title search. So this is saying if the bank, I'm asking the bank to risk that I don't get sick, that I don't get in a car accident, that I don't cut the wrong tree, because they say if I cut too many trees, they can also take the property in any improvement. So first, we've got to put septic and sewer in, water lines, we've got to put roads in, over parking, and in an office before we start on this. So that means, if for some reason I only get one building done, don't get the second one done in time for whatever reason, city's saying they can come in and take everything. And they're saying if I remove more trees than they think necessary, they can come in and take everything. So that means when we get ready to build, we've got to get it represented from the city to come out and sign off on every tree we cut down, because that tree could be worth $750,000. I mean, I'm being facetious, but this is ridiculous. I already put a million and a half dollars on that corner, 2012, I paid $40,000 in taxes. So my question is, how many times, how often, I mean, do I have to prove myself? Already showing that I can do it, my credit is good enough to get the financing, so none of that's in question. And this property is bordered on three sides. It's only got one side, no street view, so it's not valuable to anybody. Nobody's ever tried to buy it but me, because it's not valuable to anybody. It's only worth $11,000, that's the asking price. So if it was on Apple Avenue, or Henry Street, or even downtown Muskegon, I could understand of being concerned. That's not the issue. I would say let's throw this file out, it's not necessary.
As I look to the copy that was presented, this looks like the standard reverter clause language that we do in pretty much every land sale that we transact. I would point out that any project that requires site plan approval requires a notation of which trees are going to be removed. Those of you who are here may remember, we went through that process with, most notably, what's now known as Park Terrace. what's now known as park terrace, um, regarding which trees could be removed. I mean, that's just standard as part of the site plan approval process. And as far as the other, we have historically, when we've run into extenuating circumstances with a purchaser, if they've requested it, we have worked on issues like, uh, you know, there's a change in the housing market. It doesn't even take somebody getting sick or that kind of thing for us to, uh, work through those issues with the person. But this looks like the pretty standard language that's in every land sale contract I've reviewed over the last 15 years.
But, but that can be changed. It doesn't say that that can't be changed. But if you were a banker, would you loan me the money with that on the land? I mean, why would they take a risk like that?
They do on all the other developers who buy land from the city.
I, I don't think it's necessary.
At, at this juncture, because this hasn't, uh, moved forward yet, it's, it's incumbent on you and continued negotiations with the administration. That's where the, the authority and the purview for developing this, you know, still lies, at this point.
Who's the authority?
The people you've been negotiating with.
Okay. Well, I've talked to the planning department, and we've been battling for six years, when I first tried to buy this property six years ago. And I couldn't get anywhere then, because, well, they wouldn't sell it to me then. And I spoke to the city manager about this, so what they did was gave me a little more time, but I don't need any more time. Because I'm already behind. I was hoping I could get started this year, but by the time I get this property, it'd be a little late to get started, so, that's why I...
Question. So, you're saying that this language can't be altered?
Yeah.
Because I, I've sat on this committee, um, quite some times, and we've had other investors come in. I've never seen this type of, uh, language, you know, and obstacles that an investor would have to go through. Now, um, Vice Mayor Spataro said he has, but since I've sat here, I've never, and I, I tell you the truth, I think it's ridiculous, because I wouldn't invest my money as a banker, you know, if, you know, I had to go through this also. So, I think, you know, being business-friendly, and, um, like we've done with all the other, uh, business owners, I think, you know, there's some room for negotiation, and I think we should try to meet Mr. Williams' needs to help this project, you know, become successful.
Yeah, if I was a first-time builder, a first-time, hadn't did anything, I could understand the concerns that maybe I'll buy the property and it stays vacant, nothing happens. But that's not the case. I just want to extend what I've already done, already doing. That's all.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I just have, um, I think there should be room for negotiation with the, um, term, with the limit of 48 months, that, um, he has to be finished with the homes, and if not, they automatically revert back to the city. I think that's kind of strenuous, and, um, taking into account, he has been trying for six years to get this property and going, jumping over hurdles that were put in front of him. So, I just think to show that we are, um, trying to help build up our lots that we have that are vacant, and this one is vacant, unbuildable to my, um, if, 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 if I'm right.
Right, only to me.
It's buildable. It's buildable.
It's buildable, but it's, but it's boxed in, so nobody else wants...
And the only impediment has been that the, we haven't necessarily been willing to sell it in the past, but now we are.
It was owned single, it was owned single-family.
Not just any...
No, originally, originally when I tried to buy it, it was owned multifamily.
Well, that was...
And then the planning department...
There's been issues with that.
They got in other people to try to outbid me when nobody could. Then they rezoned it to single-family. That happened six years ago.
Well, from a staff standpoint, we'll continue to, to, to work with Mr. Williams.
Because, I mean, what, what do you have to lose? What does the city have to lose? They're not risking anything. If they take this paragraph out, what are they risking?
I think we're, well, what we potentially are risking, I guess, is, you know, something happens, uh, half-built building and no authority to do anything with it, you know, assuming. And, and I think it was originally 24 months, and we extended it to 48.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't need any more time. I don't need any more time. I just need not to risk everything, you know, because I signed a, you know, an agreement like this. It's not necessary. The city isn't risking either.
We can...
Let's just say, let's just say if there's no improvements made to the property, then you can have it back. If I don't do anything to it, then you can have it back. Let's say that. And then nobody wants to buy it, because it's behind me. It's between me and a swamp and Baker College parking lot. So, I mean, it's not valuable to anybody but me.
Okay.
So, if I don't buy it, it sits vacant.
Well, the situation will be then reverted. We've heard the city manager's staff will continue to, uh, work with you.
Okay, so I should see the city manager?
Commissioner Turnquist, do you have something?
Asking Commissioner Spataro, who's more familiar with this. The site plan would have to be come, come before the planning commission and be approved?
Given the size of the project, probably, but even if it's a staff review process, the ordinance has landscaping requirements for these kind of projects. So, you know, removing existing trees is part of that process. So, that, I mean, whether he was buying this property from the city, or he'd already owned it for 20 years, that part of it doesn't change when you're going for site plan approval. That's always been part of the planning commission approval process, because it's in our ordinance, uh, regarding, you know, the landscape requirements for these kind of projects.
At that time, uh, wouldn't the number of trees that can be removed be indicated?
Well, yeah.
Rather than having him take trees down, and then, whoops, did the wrong one?
Well, most developers come...
You need some guidelines there.
Most developers come in with a site plan that includes a landscape site plan as part of the approval process, even if it's just going for staff approval. And so, yes, that would indicate existing re, trees that they were going to retain, uh, trees that are going to be removed, and, uh, any other landscape changes that may be necessary, just like you do with where on the lot, the building footprint goes, all the other issues that are involved. As, as a former planning commissioner, you're, you know all the things that you look at, and that's, that's just one of those items. And, you know, I, I don't really see that requirement being different in this particular contract. If it's not there, the requirement's still there, because it's in the zoning ordinance, uh, for site plan approval.
Right, but the zoning ordinance don't say they'll take everything without any compensation if you cut down too many trees.
Well, I...
So, I don't have a problem with the trees.
Right, and, and we've already, we've already looked at, this is going to be, you know, staff have heard the discussion. But I would point out to the Commissioners, this is exactly the provision that's in place regarding the property known as Edison Landing Harbor 31, that we have had issues with over the last, going on, let's do, six, seven years now. If we had not had this clause in there, we wouldn't have this come up periodically, where we have some leverage to try to get those developers to do the things that they said they were going to do. And it's exactly this type of clause that gives us that leverage to at least bring them up periodically, because that land is sitting there undeveloped, or, you know, it's a completely different set of circumstances in that that is costing the taxpayers money, undeveloped. But, you know, this is a pretty standard clause. Usually, the, the only thing that varies from, uh, time to time is what you're going to put on that property is basically what you say you're going to do, and how long you have to do it. Those are usually the two things that change. The rest of that language is pretty standard.
The other question that Mr. Williams raised, should something happen to him due to illness or unforeseen tragedy? Is there a process where this timeframe could be, be extended under circumstances that he has no control of?
I'd probably come right up here to you guys, and you guys will make a decision to, to amend the purchase agreement.
And, and I can give two examples where that's happened. One was the Lakos property on Western Avenue, which was purchased two owners ago by the then-owners of the Holiday Inn and Edison Landing Harbor 31. Both of those projects have involved the purchase of property from the city. Both of them did not turn out the way the developers originally intended, and both of them came back to the City Commission and got, um, basically redressed for the changed circumstances as they presented it at that time. So, there's precedent for people coming back and getting these things addressed when things change.
For the interim, you'll, staff will continue to work with you.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I was just going to comment about the precedent as well, that in the past we have had the flexibility to extend the time. But earlier, you mentioned it's not about time. You don't need more time per se.
No.
And you also mentioned that it's not about the trees.
No.
So, can you help me understand what the concern is then?
Well, the concern is that, the concern is, yeah, I gotta go, I gotta...
The 48-month timeline and the trees, so...
Right, I've got to go to my bank, and he's going to see this when they do a title search. So, I'm asking him, he's got to think, if you were him, well, say if you just get one building done, you get in a car accident, you can't finish the second, now the city's going to come in and take the building that we invested in, and the infrastructure and all that, now the city owns that, so now the bank's going to do what? They're going to come sue me. So, now, I mean, you lose everything, because you signed an agreement that was ridiculous.
And you've already signed this, right?
No, I have, no, that's why I'm here.
Because this preceded my tenure as a Commissioner.
Right, that's why I'm here.
I don't know all the intricacies of it, that's what I'm trying to understand.
I've already, because we're talking about property that's, it's only worth $11,000. It's boxed in on three sides. It's only valuable to me. Nobody's ever tried to buy it. We dated it six years ago, it's been vacant at least 50 years. City pays somebody to cut it every year, but they're spending money on it. I want to extend, put more apartments on it. I've already got 24, I want to add some more. And so, I'm saying, the city isn't taking any risk, but they want me to take all the risk. I mean, just sell me the property and let me build on it. I mean, you said it's standard, but you can always change stuff. It's not written in stone.
This isn't the full agreement, so I don't know exactly what...
Well, the rest of it, the rest of it, right, the rest of it is just...
Is it the one near the corner of, uh, Marquette and Getty?
Marquette and Getty.
That came up last fall?
Right, right, right.
Okay, I vaguely recall that, and it ended being approved. So, you've not yet bought it or, or signed this?
No.
Have you gone to any banks with this agreement and gotten their, their input?
No, no, I'm, I'm going to go to...
Whether or not they would approve financing?
No, I've talked to the bank who I originally own the floor that I'm doing, that I've done already. So, that's what I'd go back to. We've already talked about extending it, so they're comfortable with that. But, no, I didn't even want to go to them with this. Because I didn't think it was...
I think that might, that might help with, in terms of, um, working with, with Frank and our city attorney, that might help, getting, you know, the banks on the same page are getting their input on whether or not they'd be hesitant or be fine with the language of this. So, I, I would, I mean, I'm sure you, you work with...
Yeah, but I mean, why, why couldn't we change, why couldn't we change the language? I mean, what, what is the city risking if, say I didn't, say I didn't do anything?
There is the possibility if it's a true impediment.
Say I didn't do anything, what, what would they lose?
I would just encourage you to...
But the city manager's made a clear...
Okay.
He's, uh, okay, well, ready, willing, able to, uh, continue to meet.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you for your investments.
Yes, again.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission at this time? Sir? We can have you take the podium and give your name and address.
My name is Lerue Layton, I live at 507 Wood Street. And, um, man, you know what, this, this is the second commission meeting that I've ever been to, and I think I'm going to want to be one of you guys pretty soon. For no, for, for no bad reason, I'm just saying, I see how important everything is, and I think I want to be a part of that one day. But, um, I do have a question. And my question is, um, who's responsible for bringing jobs to our city?
It's a combination of the private sector, along with our, uh, Planning and Economic Development, uh, Office, along with the, uh, Muskegon Area First, and partnership with, you know, all the players, including, you know, the gentleman that was here tonight, and our, our collaboratives and cooperation, you know, using the tools available to us to help business expand, so...
I asked that question, because I've asked, uh, just, I guess I should say, uh, non-commission members, and nobody really knows. So, I thought, you know what, I got a question that I've been having for a long time, I'm going to bring it tonight, I got to answer, so I'll go home and think of something else.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? If not, Commissioner Hood?
There's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
We've got closed session.
Oh, 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 that's right, I forgot all about that.
Oh.
So, now you gotta do something else. Now you can move that we go into closed session.
I move to go to, into closed session.
To discuss pending litigation.
And discuss pending litigation.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by at least three people, but I'll give it to Commissioner Rinsaba Saving, uh, to go into closed session to discuss, discuss, discuss pending litigation. Thank you. Good to see everybody. If you'd like, you can hang out until we get back. We can't tell you what we're going to discuss in there, sorry.